Or.
Check in there for.
Yeah. So all of it?
Yeah, and as long as we got three votes.
Okay, so we don't need to separate it?
Okay. As long as there's three, it looks like all three votes on. If not, then we can separate it up.
Is that item F?
What's that? We, uh, F or invoice if we need to.
I mean, it's.
Oh, maybe Cindy was looking out for me.
Mr. LaFever, you ready? Cindy, you ready?
We're blessed.
Mr. Bennett, you ready?
I'm ready.
Mr. Wilson.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom with login and call-in information posted on our website. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded. For tonight's meeting, Robert's rules will still apply, and the meeting will be run by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. During the meeting, in order to offer comment, you must first be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, you will need to use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and your address. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, we ask that you unmute your microphone, and after speaking, we ask that you please mute your microphone. East Hemphill Township Public Comment Rules will apply for all public comment. Number one, you must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes or follow the chat procedure already discussed for Zoom attendance. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment for non-agenda items. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period. All comments should be directed to the board. We will now move on to our first item on the agenda, and I would ask that you would join me and rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Chairman and friends, tomorrow is December the seventh, and I suggest we could take a moment to remember those who in a surprise attack gave their lives for the freedom we all shared today at the beginning of World War II. Thank you.
And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Up first, we have a very pleasant item to start our meeting off with. A police presentation. And Chief Brubaker, we will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Stand before you here tonight to recognize a citizen life-saving save. On November third of this year, nineteen-year-old male who's present here today, Trey Wansley, had a medical emergency and went into cardiac arrest at Ducklings Preschool just down the street here. Lucky for Trey, Jared White was also on the premise that evening. Mr. White administered chest compressions, CPR, immediately upon the collapse of Trey, and continued life-saving efforts until first responders from the Police Department, EMS and the Fire Department got on scene. Police Department administered an AED and CPR continued. Trey has made a full recovery and is here tonight if you wanted to say hello. He's doing good. So Jared, if you'd like to come forward. I know I'll invite Lemza up as well. Fred, you want to come up as well? Like to just shake your hand and say, I'm glad you're here.
On behalf of the EMS Federation, I have a few Clinical Save Awards as well, both for Police Department, I'm not sure who. Okay, so Police Officer Ethan Etter. Police Officer Andrew Karnock. Officer Paul Solari. Sergeant Joshua Sandman. On the EMS side, I have EMT candidate Lauren DiMascolo. EMT Savannah Chaboya. And paramedic Amanda Paglisi. There will also be Clinical Save Awards for the Fire Department that was there responding. There was a clerical oversight for receiving, for getting them, but we will be extending them to them as well. So thank you to all that responded.
The Police Department has another recognition we would like to do this evening. We would like to recognize Mr. Donald Brubaker. Brubaker was brought here tonight under some, some other coordination with, with his son here, so. Township has a proclamation for your dedication to the community over the years, to the Police Department, and to all of the emergency services within East Hemphill Township. So I have a resolution to read. Whereas the Township of East Hemphill values and appreciates the active engagement and community support of its residents, and whereas community involvement plays a vital role in fostering a safe and supportive environment for all residents, and whereas Mr. Donald Brubaker has consistently exhibited a profound dedication to the betterment, to the betterment of our community, advocating for the interests and well-being of its residents by donating his time and energy to members of the community, charities, and churches. Whereas Mr. Donald Brubaker, a dedicated member of our community, has also demonstrated an outstanding commitment and support to the East Hemphill Township Police Department by providing the township with information cards, donating appliances for our break room, and for many years supplying weekly snacks for duty employees. Whereas the Township of East Hemphill acknowledges and commends Mr. Brubaker for his unwavering dedication and meaningful contributions, and whereas Mr. Donald Brubaker's commitment and dedication to East Hemphill Township and its residents cannot be questioned. He has served the community with kindness and humble generosity, and we wish him well during his upcoming retirement from business of which has been in East Hemphill since the existence of it. Now therefore, it will be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of East Hemphill Township, acting on behalf of the Police Department and all of its residents, do hereby highly commend and thank Mr. Donald Brubaker for his generous commitment to the betterment of East Hemphill Township for its present and future residents. Resolve further that this acknowledgement be recorded in the official records of East Hemphill Township, serving as a lasting tribute to the contributions of Mr. Brubaker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Police Department. We have a commemoration of service for you for all that you've done for us. A couple McNags of swag that we have. Gotcha. And importantly, as well, the official resolution. So thank you very much for, over the years, all of the support here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need an official action on the resolution.
So before us, we have a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-25, recognizing Donald Brubaker for his service to the Police Department and East Hemphill Township. Motion for Mr. Russell is their second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you again. Up next, we have our consent agenda, moving right along. The consent agenda consists of routine items that require very little public discussion or debate. And before we continue, if, if anyone here wanted to head out, that's perfectly fine. You're more than welcome to stay. We would, we love the company. Are there any questions or comments from the board on the consent agenda?
I'll be abstaining from item F.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. So then, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through E as presented? Motion for Mr. LaFever is their second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Is there a motion to approve item F invoice list as presented?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Obstained.
Motion carries three to zero with one abstention. Thank you. Up next, action items. U-Haul State Road reaffirm Resolution 2023-20.
The board adopted this resolution maybe a month ago, actually in August, and we didn't file the, the one sewer module with the proper date on it that it was after the resolution, so we have to adjust it for the, for the date.
It's a pretty routine.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No.
None.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom?
No.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-26, reaffirming Resolution 2023-20, which amends the township's 537 plan to allow sewage retaining tanks at the U-Haul site on State Road?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next, United Disability Service Foundation.
Mr. Cutner is here.
Thank you for your time. I'm seeking a resolution. I need a governing body to approve a resolution so we can complete our application for an LSA grant. And we're requesting the grant for eight hundred and thirteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars, and it's primarily to, to improve accessibility for folks with disabilities and older adults. UDS is a company that provides services to folks with disabilities to about eleven thousand people every single day. Two, two thousand of those are here in Lancaster County, and we're looking to expand our vehicles to be able to create greater independence and greater accessibility for people with disabilities in Lancaster. We gave you sort of a brief, I guess, overview of that. Do you have any questions about what this would do or anything for me?
Mr. LaFever, did?
I do not. So as I understand it from your document, your organization is headquartered here in East Hemphill, on air and court, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and the grant for eight hundred thousand is for vehicles, suppo- primarily.
Support fourteen different programs and services.
Right, all around, all around the state.
Yes, but the bulk of them are here.
Are they, are they here? Okay, awesome.
Yes.
All right, good, thank you.
Appreciate the service he provides, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Any other questions from the board or comments? Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-27 to authorize the submission of a local share assessment grant application, which would provide funding to the UDSF for their fleet expansion?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Again, thank you for your work.
Very much.
Up next, we have the Selo Partnership Access Easement Agreement to allow for access drive across land along Nistley Road.
So the Recreation Authority for the past several months has been looking at and working with Verizon or the Selo Partnership Group to create a, or put up a cell tower on the backside of the golf course. I believe it's along hole fourteen, essentially between Nistley Road property and the edge of the golf course. What they need is an access road easement, which is the first action item, which is highlighted in yellow, and then the actual tower would be in the small box right here. To give you some context, the basin that is going to be proposed for stormwater is essentially in this area, this being Nistley Road. You have representatives, Mr. Bennett is representative of the authority, Mr. Brubaker and Mr. Trump are here on behalf of the authority.
And I'm assuming the authority is supportive.
We are. Dan, you have anything you want to weigh in on?
Mr. Trump, you'll have to talk into the speaker, sorry.
I think the, the only thing that I would bring to attention is where, I guess, our plan here is to utilize the, not paved surface, but stone area that was already there parking for the garden area or gardening area, so. Extending that down to the rest, trying to utilize what we already got there.
And I would point out that Dan's worked very hard in getting this, pulling this whole contract together with the provider, with Verizon, and done a great job, and I appreciate that publicly. I'd just like to get that out there.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board?
None.
Any questions or comments from the audience? And any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to grant an access easement to Selo Partnership for an access drive across land along Nistley Road, which will provide access to a cell tower placement on the golf course property?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero.
The second part of this is then for the actual cell tower itself. Because you are the owner of the property, the, the rec authority has already signed off on the sublease, but does take counter signature by the, by the township.
All right. So any other discussion on that point on the township, signing off on the lease for the cell tower? Any, anything? Okay. Any questions or comments on the audience from that? Or Zoom?
No.
So hearing none, is there a motion to authorize a sublease of the golf course ground lease, which will allow for a cell tower on the golf course?
So moved.
Your motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, the acceptance of resignation from one of our board members, Andrew Weaver. Any discussion or comment on this?
Said that he's moved on, but understand the reasons why and wish him well. He did a good job to the township.
Did great service for us as a supervisor, as well as a service on the planning commission, and we applaud him for that.
Yes, his perspective will be missed. Any questions or comments from the audience in regards to this? Any from Zoom?
No.
Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Andrew Weaver from the Board of Supervisors on December sixth, two thousand twenty-three?
So moved with a heartfelt appreciation from this board, from Mr. Weaver, for his service.
Thank you. I'll second that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Up next, the CM High Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract.
The Traffic Signal Maintenance Contract with CM High has been an annual event that we've had in the township. The township has had a, has a great working relationship with CM High. Mr. Madonna is very comfortable with them. They are offering seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars, which is no change from last year. However, their hourly rates have, have increased slightly.
Any questions or comments from the board?
CM High does a very good job, and they do most of the signals in the county.
Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom?
No.
Is there a motion to authorize the signature on the traffic signal maintenance contract for two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell is their second.
Second.
Second for Mr. LaFever. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, the two thousand twenty-four meeting calendar, which will establish meeting dates and advertise.
Right. There, there's really no change from our, our typical pattern for meetings. The supervisors meet the first and third Wednesday. Traffic Commission meets at the third Wednesday at six. We do have two caveats to that, which is the four-thirty reorg meeting on June, January second, and then our budget meeting in October, I think it's the twenty-second of October, which start at four-thirty. The rest start at seven.
So really no changes to the existing meeting pattern? It'll be the same as it was last year? Any questions or comments on that from the audience? Any from Zoom?
No.
Is there a motion to authorize staff to publish the two thousand twenty-four meeting calendar as presented?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Abstained.
Okay. Motion carries three to zero with one abstention. Up next, the two thousand twenty-three Municipal Insurance Trust Dividend Check. It's a partial reimbursement as an incentive to full-time employees. The recommendation this year is three hundred dollars. That was a recommendation from the Finance Committee. Any discussion on this item? Any questions?
Cindy, just want to give a little background on where this money comes from. Read out, but just for the audience.
The Susquehanna Municipal Trust handles our workers' comp and coverage, and every year, there's, it's a trust, so there's a dividend payment back to the township. This two thousand twenty-three's dividend was thirty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars. If you contribute or give to the town, each full-time employee, three hundred dollars, that amounts to twenty-one thousand. So there's still remaining almost ten thousand dollars that the township has gathered from those dividend checks. And this is typical for the past several years. Last year's actually happened to be fifty-five thousand.
And that's because we have low claims.
Low claims.
It's a recognition that we run a safe operation.
Correct.
Is why we get a dividend back.
Correct. Which attributes to the employees, yes.
That's why we get the bonus back to the employees for the job they do.
Exactly.
Thank you for that explanation. Does that, hopefully that makes sense to everyone? Does anyone from the audience have a question or comment on that? How about on Zoom?
No.
Hearing none, is there a motion to authorize the three hundred dollar reimbursement of the two thousand twenty-three SMIT dividend check to all full-time employees?
So moved.
Your motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Two thousand twenty-four Tax Rate Resolution twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-eight, establishing the two thousand twenty-four tax rate at one point zero one mils, unchanged from two thousand twenty-three.
So the last two items deal with the budget and the tax rate. The tax rate is, is being set at one point zero one mils, which is how the two thousand twenty-four budget was created. I believe the last time it was changed was probably about fifteen, sixteen years?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, yes. And I was just going to state, that's outstanding, and it's a record I'm proud to be a part of. I feel confident that it's a record that my other board members that I serve with are proud of as well. And it does not happen by accident. There's a lot of work and a lot of diligence from our staff and a lot of fiscal responsibility exercised by the board, as well as planning, and planning that took place on, before many of us on this board started to serve. And it's planning that I hope we continue. And it's planning that I hope we continue to exercise good judgment in the way that we spend our tax dollars and the way we budget. So I just want to give everybody a pat on the back for this. Again, it's an outstanding accomplishment. Any comments or questions from the audience? Any from Zoom? Is there a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-eight, establishing the two thousand twenty-four tax rate at one point zero one mils?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett, is there, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Budget adoption consideration, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-nine.
The proposed budget was adopted by the board at their budget meeting at the end of October. It was duly published and is ready for consideration by the board. At their November fifteenth meeting, there was review of the budget, and that was done after we received our two thousand twenty-two audit, which necessitated some changes to those numbers and also correct some errors that we found in the two thousand twenty-four requests. The proposed budget was accepted by the board, revenues versus expenditures, expenses with a positive forty thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars, after the edits to the proposed, the budget shows of revenue versus expenditures of a negative one forty-six, two thirty-five. Keeping in mind, our budget is, is general fund budget is just over fourteen million, and our starting cash is just over, just shy of five million.
Any questions, comments from the board on this?
Another balanced budget, money going into capital reserve again. Job well done.
Any questions or comments from the audience? Any from Zoom?
No.
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-nine, accepting the two thousand twenty-four budget as adjusted the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting, and reflected in Exhibit A attached to the resolution?
So moved.
Your motion for Mr. Bennett, is there, second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Russell? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero. Thank you. Up next, old business. Do we have any old business to discuss? Do we have any new business to discuss? Public comment? Do we have anybody here that wishes to make public comment? Do we have any on Zoom?
No.
Managers report?
The Central Road South project is moving along. Diana attended the last management meeting, and she says all is going well. The Old Royce Town Road Bridge project, we were at a stalemate for that for quite some time due to the Windstream fiber line. Fortunately, Representative Miller has come through for us. I just heard today that Windstream has reached out to the contractor, and that work is being scheduled, and I would attribute that to Mr. Miller, or Representative Miller's intervention. The Farmingdale Road long-term project is winding down. We did have some issues with some of the intersections. As was previously discussed, the Monovision device, which tracks what's going on at the intersection of Orville and Farmingdale, was put out the week of the twenty-seventh. That data is now being analyzed by our traffic engineer to determine exactly what is going on and happening out there in time of day. He is also looking at a potential additional right-of-way from the Millers to improve that interior angle of the curve from Farmingdale to Orville. And he's looking at the Farmingdale stop sign, possibly moving that back to allow for, for better flow of traffic. I did have one positive comment from a resident who lives in Barcrest, that he was happy with the improvement. I did also have a conversation recently with the property owners at the Orville and Farmingdale intersection. The driveway usage is increasing and is also being used, the yards are being used now. So they are very concerned, and I explained to them what our process is and what we're doing. But I was very honest with them and told them that what we're doing probably is not going to correct traffic flow the way it's happening. So we'll see what the, the engineer comes back with, with improvements. The Stony Battery Trail, the foreigners have accepted the vacated area from West Hemphill Township. So Perry is cleared to work with West Hemphill Township to remove that block top of the short stub road between Kaufman and Stony Battery, which will be turned into a trail, and that's really weather-dependent, and that might have to wait till spring depends. But everything is free and clear and moving forward on that. The AHR Phase Two, which is funded by a DCNR grant, we have filed the Local Services Share Grant, similar to what the gentleman, Mr. Kepner, mentioned tonight. We have also filed that grant, and that, we should hear something about that in the spring. And if we don't get that, we also have a secondary grant that we're going to be looking at. I have reached out to Representative Miller and Senator Almond for support letters. I've received those, so those will go along with the package. We took care of the sublease for the Verizon project and the cell tower. We took care of the municipal trust. We do have Rec Authority vacancies, which will be taken care of at our reorganization meeting. For supervisors' vacancies, those applications are due December eighth. I will disseminate those to the supervisors over the weekend. We adopted the budget.
And just to be clear on that, we will be selecting, making a decision on those applicants at our December twentieth meeting.
Okay. Not much is happening with the stormwater projects. The NPDS permit for the Nistley Road Basin and the Gloucester Basin have been submitted, so hopefully that comes back in the next few weeks. The Harrisburg Pike Ditch, number six, DMA is looking at an SRB grant funding opportunity to see if that fits into their criteria, so that, that might be a funding source for that. She's being a bit creative in, in, in how that gets filed. We did have an admin finance meeting, as was mentioned earlier. We talked about the workers' compensation dividend check, the AHR Park, and budget discussions. Concludes my report.
The only other thing I would add, we did have a public safety meeting or finance or admin meeting with?
We did have a meeting, a, a, a meeting with the leadership of East Pete Borough Council. It was a discussion regarding fire services.
And that was this evening, just prior to our meeting?
Yes.
Very good. And then for the appointment for the supervisor, which will take place at our next meeting, that is prescribed by law. We have thirty days to act on that, which means that's why we have to do it at our next meeting. We, each supervisor will be tasked with interviewing the applicants on their own, and you'll be responsible to reach out to them once we get that information after December eighth. Okay. I have nothing further. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Once more for the audience? Okay. Well, then seeing none, we're going to adjourn our meeting. We will not return, and it is seven thirty-six P M. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. Thank you. Want to get in my mind and so we'll have a talk with you later this afternoon?